As I said previously, this is a subcommittee meeting of the zoning board dealing with Crescent Street. It's dealing with, since Amy, does forty-four, forty-six, forty-eight Crescent Street. And the comments made by the board, which had to do with massing, pretty much. They were told at the last meeting where we are with the number of parking spaces. And the discussion with the lieutenant. Since then, of course, there's been a meeting by the traffic, the TAC, basically, in which the lieutenant basically brought up his concerns, if any, and I guess there were few, if any, at this point. In fact, they were quite positive from, I guess, from the fire department and from lieutenant as well. So, with that, I guess, and Amy's online with me, so we're both zoning board members as part of this committee. So with that, I guess, Brian, you can get, jump into it.
I guess, you know, we're kind of, I guess, we're kind of at a crossroads from our perspective. You know, we attended the traffic advisory committee meeting on Friday. They're going to issue a memo, but I think it's going to be pretty much, for lack of a better way of saying it, I think they're satisfied with the issues that they raised have been addressed. And their concerns, we were there for quite a while on Friday morning. And they said that they would be issuing a memo, it's going to have certain conditions on it that would, that, you know, commitment for the visitor parking spaces that we discussed. Left-hand turn only out of the garage. Signage concerns that they want the zoning board to look at. Electronic equipment for access to the garage and to the building, cameras. So, at the end of the day, I think, you know, that's in essence what the memo is going to say. Again, I never speak for anybody else, but we've got the tape and it's pretty clear from my mind walking out of there that, that they thought that most, if not all, of the issues raised had been addressed. So, you know, we're, we're here at forty-two units. You know, we told you the last time, we really don't have a ton of room to move. You heard the way that, you know, the reaction of the board. That, you know, I think at this point is somewhat mixed, to be honest with you. I think we've made a good faith effort. You know, one of the board members said, you know, I mean, we're certainly not going to come down, you know, a huge number of units at this point. I never say never, you know, that there's not room for discussion. I never like to close the door. But, you know, if there's some type of an adjustment we can do to massing, even if it's more expensive to build. My client has always been open to that. And, you know, we haven't even got into the aesthetics part of this, you know, the materials, which nobody really wanted to until we were in agreement on the, on the amassing and the size. But that's certainly something that I think is going to be a big part of this project. As far as how it's going to look and the materials and the, and, and the design, the final design of the architecture in landscaping, which are really going to enhance it. And I, and I think we all know that, you know, the zoning board has a lot of say and input on that through conditions that, you know, if the project goes another route, that doesn't happen. In essence, if the project's eventually just approved by the state, then there are no conditions on, on the looks or aesthetics or materials or conditions, no conditions usually. So, you know, that's where we are. So, you know, you know, Jim, do you have any thoughts architecturally? You're the architect. We're here, we're here to, to try to work with you. If this ideas that you have, we're certainly open to them. We, we would like to, we would like to satisfy everyone as much as possible. So, again, you know, that's kind of where we are, I guess.
All right. So, I've taken a look at this. And as, as you might know, I have been pushing this building down over time. Cutting it back in ways that basically sculpt it more to the landscape and the slope of the area. And the like, so this building doesn't tower over some of the adjoining buildings, basically. And, you know, the, I think we've take originally from what was originally proposed, if I remember right. We've taken one floor off entirely. And then mansarded a lot of the top, basically, to give it more of a roof type of appearance. And I think the last meeting, we were talking about basically the, the massing and how the right-hand side unit, whether it disappeared, or whether it was there, how it affected basically a downhill appearance of the building. With listening to what the board had to say. I took another look at this and said, maybe we need to take some of the elements on the fourth floor and move them to the third floor. Or eliminate them entirely. So if I can get my screen up here, which will be a challenge in itself. We'll see what we can do to share. And that's not it, that's for sure. Now I gotta get back.
You can see it now.
All right. So, this is what I was thinking. So, this, this area in here basically steps back. And what you end up with is basically a building that comes along like this. Pops up near the entry, pops down, and then flattens out. And to sort of, and this area here was up in this air, up on this floor level here. So, I've taken basically the units that are out in here, out and taken this piece and dropped it down. Which has a little deck area with it. I think this one does as well, to make that point. This is what happens, basically, is on the third floor, you end up with a unit here in this area, only one, as opposed to a group of units in that area. And on the fourth floor is we pull this area back and reconfigure one or two units in this area here. And this is just open space. This is not, no building in this area at all. So, you end up at this level here, no building. At this level, only a partial bit of the building, which is this here. So, the end result is this steps down even more than before, because it used to step down here. And then like that, and then like this, and then down. Now it steps down, comes over, steps down again. And on this side here, it steps back. So if you were to look at, let's see, if I can get this darn thing out of the way. That's the option study. You look at this in another way. This is, this is the hill, Crescent Hill. And what happens is this building instead, this section of building, instead of going all the way out to the front, basically comes and is cut back. This piece here is way back, basically, towards the middle of the building. So, it's up here, it drops down, comes over, and then drops down. So, all of what you see here was at one time up in this, up in this area here. So that, that changes basically how this all comes together.
So that white area, Jim, would not be there anymore? White area on the, on your, on your sketch? You've got, you've got gray.
It stepped back. It's sort of pushed halfway back.
It's pushed back Ezra, okay. Yeah. It's still there, but it's not right out on the, out on the edge of the building. It's pushed back.
So, damn. So, yeah. So, so this edge here has been pulled all the way back there, which shows up in this piece here. See, right there?
I got it. Yeah.
It's all roof now. So it used to, the profile here used to go like this, around here and like that and across. So this all opens up to push this back. And this, these elements here in, in here, basically, become the prominent elements in this, right there, which all forms the entrance.
You're too proud. Go to the front, the elevation you were just on first. So, all the way back to that proud tower as you face the building? When you say it's pushed back? You're, you're on mute, Jim. You're on mute.
Back again. So you can see in here where this section is up high. And all that now, if you take this here, take that piece out. And you drop this thing down, then that's what you get in the other, in the other study. In this one here. I lost my image.
I'm going to scroll, open a cascading.
No, I, I physically lost my image.
You're going to open it again.
Yeah. It was.
Nine-five it was dated. Oh-nine-five, you had it on the tab. I saw it. There it is.
All right. So you can see this whole, this whole corner here has changed considerably. Right there. So, that compared with that. See, see how the corner's changed? Between the two. And this area here. Right in there. Has changed by pulling that all back and dropping this corner. So this corner drops, those, this area behind it all pulls back. Then from the side street, what happens is you just, you just get this profile like this coming down where this all belongs back. Now this corner would have to be worked out architecturally a little bit more, but that's, that's the idea. So that so that you end up with this on the third floor. And you end up with that open roof and everything pushed down. And that redesigned basically for two units or so.
On this plan, Jim, what's the net units? Have you not been able to figure that out yet?
No, I'm, that's not my job. I'm looking at sculpting this building and trying to make it cascade down the hillside in somewhat a semblance with what's already there in the neighborhood. And breaking it up massing-wise, so that it fits in, basically. You look at the building uphill here, and it's about, there's two lifts on this thing, basically. With the retaining wall that's in here somewhere, another one here, and then the building. And it's got the same sort of architecture, basically. So you see the three stories here and sitting on top of the garage. But in reality, I'm not sure where the elevation of this, the up of this roof is and with this one here, once you do all this. But it does, it does cascade down the hill. So, when you get down here and you look up, you're just seeing this edge until you see that edge in the middle. And maybe see some of this edge beyond this. But all this is, all this corner basically is set back like it shows in that plan. Like it shows in here. So this is all roof. This is unit. So I can't tell you, you know, whether you can get two units out of here, whether you want to do one massive unit, or what. So I'm not, you know, I think there's probably three to four units lost in this. But then on the other hand, I thought, well, you know, it's, let's go back to this. You go back to the plan. Find it. You go back to the plan, it's a question of whether you, whether you can't do something in here for a unit. It's, it's the garage entry on the upper level is here. These are all permanently parking, basically, not guest parking. And depending on how the numbers work out, it could be, it could be a unit tucked in this corner. And right now, the windows that are on the face of this are phony. To go along with the architecture, basically. So, you see these windows here, they're into the garage. But if that was to become a unit of sorts, then they'd really be active. So it's, it's one of those things that someone else has got to pick it up and go forward and see how it works. But it's my, it's my way of looking at how to slice this thing a bit.
So Jim, can I speak for a minute?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so over the weekend, Brian.
Peter, just for, hold on, just for, just for Ezra's benefit and, and folks, some of the public. So this is Peter C. and Doos, our architect. So, just so everybody knows who you are, because you're on the phone. Go ahead, Pete.
Thank you. So, so over the weekend, discussions with the clients about reducing the massing of the building and how we might be able to do that. We started with taking off the fourth floor of the building completely. Just removing it and dropping the mansard down one level. So what did that do? It gave, so if you, if you have the upper level garage, then you have floor two and three. Floor two and three are mirror image of each other, and that, that gives us thirty units. So that's kind of where we were at. And then we started to say, let's go back into the garage on the far right, upper garage, and put three units back, maybe four on the far end. So that's kind of answering what you started to say about the windows not being fake anymore, but actually being units at that level.
Yeah.
So we, we played, we played around graphically a little bit, and we got ourselves to, at the, at that point, I had thirty-six, but I was trying to, I'm trying to get them to the number forty. So when we saw that great drawing that you did today of the front elevation, the thought came, and I'll try and reference your elevation, I believe you're all looking at it. You, you, the building breaks into, I'll call them towers, but there's tower one, then tower two. Tower three, four, three, four, and five, the center of the building where the entrance is. We thought after discussion and seeing what you did today, let's do what I said, take the fourth floor off. And then let's do the repeating second and third floor. But right in those center three towers, let's lift the building again, and I'll put four units up there. So the building breaks down completely on the left, completely on the right, and rises in the middle. That gives me the ability to get back out to the back again, like we wanted to with a roof terrace. Also allows me to get the stairs to work. Block this out very, very crudely, but, and I can put four two-bedroom units on that upper floor, and that would put us at the number forty. Which I think the clients are getting more comfortable with, and I think it does what you tried to do with your rendering and elevations is to, is to drop the building much more drastically than it had been.
Peter, you're saying you dropped it more than Jim's saying.
Yeah. Yep. It's, it's kind of what, it, it, it was, it was interesting to see what Jim did, and I actually printed his elevation earlier, and I was cutting out sections with a pair of scissors, this kind of thing. All that's gone. Now I'll pull the middle up. So I kind of, it's almost like we did that extreme move of removing the whole floor. Now we're just going to tuck a little bit of it back near the elevator area. But I think it, I think it answers what we're trying to do, which is to break the building down. And I'm trying, and also, you know, try and have a decent unit count.
One of the things we gotta, we gotta, yeah, is what you're, you know, one of the things that I gotta be cognizant of is, you know, the traffic advisory committee was comfortable with the parking ratios that we were able to provide.
Yeah.
We gotta make sure we, if, if we're gonna lose units here, we gotta keep the parking proportionately what we've represented we would do.
Right. That's right.
Proportionately. And if you're losing units, then you don't need those spaces. So it'll all be, you know, proportionate. What will you?
I feel, I feel like, I felt like we weren't, that Jim was heading in a direction, and as he just said, kind of comes back to us now to kind of take the ball and run. And, and we haven't had, really had an hour or so to do this, but we started to do just that, to, to say, what can we do to get it to look more like what he's kind of showed us as a, as a direction. And that's kind of where we're at right at the moment. We're in flux. But maybe that's an approach. I, I think, I mean, I think to say to remove a whole floor was, was a pretty drastic move. I think we'd all agree, there's no way that's not going to be noticeable, right? That it's gone. So, I think, I think we're in a good direction now, if we can, if we can do things, as you say, Brian, get the parking to work. And get the units to, to fit in there.
So.
I think the problem.
So traditionally, in a building of the turn of the century like this mimics, all right?
Yeah.
The front entry, in fact, might have a tower segment, so to speak, or a, a more robust, higher element, basically, that forms the announcement of here's, here's the front of the building. Here's the entry to the building. There's no guessing, basically, as to where the entry is. It's not going to be on the side. It's not going to be in the back. Is, it basically, as a, as a statement of architecture, basically says, here I am. Come here, and you can enter. So, I, I, I would like to see that possibility, basically, with taking off a massive amount of the fourth floor, but leaving the element which basically announces the building in the middle. I think in, you know, in, in the conversations we've had, which is hard to see in a flat image, but the undulation of things sticking out and going back basically helped break down a facade that could be just a blank wall with a bunch of windows in it, in its simplest form. So, so that helps. And even though I've done these concept ideas as to where to cut and slice and do that sort of stuff, I'm not sure aesthetically, how it will look. Because I haven't, you know, I'm not building a model here and doing it. I'm just taking a lot of your images and doing the same thing you're, you're doing electronically and cutting and pasting the elements, basically. To make something at least visually understandable. So, I, you know, I, I, you know, I'm not, not necessarily for this idea. It's a, it's a concept. It's a, it's to juice the, maybe, you know, think outside the box as to how this might be handled. And, you know, if, if you've got other ideas that does something similar, as you've already referenced an approach, is, I'd like to see it, particularly as to how, I think more how it, how the right-hand side works. Because we've sort of had to step down. So where are we on the right-hand side when you've knocked off the fourth floor? But I agree in that, in that, it's, it's unfortunate that in the original concept, the windows that are on that parking level are not windows that are occupied behind. And I think if we can provide occupancy in there, I think that's a great, great thing. As opposed to just having phony windows, basically, that really have no activity and no life in them.
Exactly. Nighttime they're lit, there's something happening there. It's not false. So, so when you said that, I thought, well, we're, we're coming, we're heading in a very similar direction to each other. Which, and that's a good thing. I guess my bigger concern is, and, and maybe this isn't the right forum, but we're, this is all on the docket again tomorrow night. Is that right, Brian, at the zoning board? So how will we be ready to go to the zoning board?
You won't.
I'm thinking about parking and all.
We, let me tell you something. You know, my position on this is, has always been, you know, we've already extended the time, you know, I think, I, I think the common goal is to make this as right as we can and not to
Yeah.
rush it. You know, so, you know, that's my thought. I'd like to hear, Ezra, do you have any thoughts from what you've heard? And what we're kind of saying? I always would like your thoughts.
Yeah, sure. Um, I mean, I had the same concern about this being up tomorrow night and not really sure what we're going to present then, other than maybe say, you look, we had, you know, we just met the night before, and we think we're moving in a positive direction. I think the, the bigger issue was the concern I had in that meeting that we'd spent a lot of time here in these working groups, even before I got involved. And it was clear that, you know, there'd been quite a number of changes, moving a particular direction. And then, you know, I think, I think that the idea that Jim had, which I think made a lot of sense, was to bring that to the board and say, is this moving in the right direction? And what I was concerned, I was hearing is them saying, maybe it's in the right direction, but it's nowhere far enough. You know, you know, the, the direction is bring it down, bring it down, bring it down. But, you know, and I, I didn't think, I mean, it's hard for me to read this board, and that's not really my job. But I, I worry that there's a question of, you know, the, the whole process should be getting to yes somewhere. We need to be sure that what we're bringing them, next time we bring something, they say, aha, that's it. That was, that addressed our concerns. I'm a little confused, because I think some of their concerns had to do with parking, with access. And those largely seem to have been addressed, as, as far as I could tell, from the experts who looked at it. But the overall concern about the, the, the massing, the scale, did not seem to be addressed in it, you know, right? That's a tricky one in a 40B process. And so I guess, you know, you know, it's, it's, I think it's Jim and Amy, I guess, who really know the board better than I do. You know, whether they, they feel that this is getting there, you know, if you, if you take this and, you know, could, could bring it down on the shoulders. Is that the kind of thing the board was, was expecting? Or is that still too little, too late? I guess that it's, it's a question of sort of what is the overall scale of change they're looking for? And what are the problems that's supposed to be addressing? And are there any other ways to address that? Because I, you know, I think I haven't really seen that. So.
I, I think your statement about the board and its feelings about where it was, where it is, and where it might go is appropriate in the way that the, some members of the board are looking at this. And it's massing, I think there, I think there's probably a lot less concern, particularly after they heard from, had here next from TAC. Basically about the issue of parking and traffic issues, basically. There's always been two issues, basically. It's been size, massing, and, and traffic and parking on the hillside and that sort of stuff. And the lack of parking in the whole area as well. So, I'm not sure that one of those birds isn't sort of killed. But then again, you know, everybody has their own opinion, but the, the Um but then again, you know, everybody has their own opinion, but the the real one now is to to continue to work the massing. And I I wanna see what Peter's basically proposing, see how that works out. Um and it's something I thought about a little bit, but I didn't dare take that far a step. So he's he's taken a bigger leap than I have, basically. And I'm I'm looking at it basically in a a three dimensional way, only in the sense that I've taken two elevations, basically, and. Carved pieces out of it, in a way I think that's workable. But as I said earlier, I'm not sure whether it all falls together well. You know, you can cut and pe- cut and paste all sorts of things, but then all of a sudden. You look, you look back on it after you've done all that and you say, oh my god, that's terrible. And so I only propose that this is one way to look at it, and it hasn't been worked through. Peter's got a different way to work at it, and it may be more plausible, but, you know, um. If if that's Peter's way is basically getting to the same point, which is to cut the massing, then. Who am I necessarily to care about the architecture except that, except in the mass form? So I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to be an architect, trying to be a designer of this thing. I'm just showing basically a path. So, you know, for me. For me, it's it's, you know, let Peter do his work.
Yeah, but I think what Ezra's saying, Jim, I I mean, and and the conversation needs to be had, is. You know, I don't know how some board members feel. I mean, I'm wondering if you could shrink the building in half but keep it at forty units, if they still have a problem with the unit count. How do they define, how does some of the board members define massing? You know, is it the it the size unit number, is it the size building? Um, you know, that's, right Ezra, is that kind of?
I think that that's part of it. I think in some ways, you're right, that the number of units should affect, you know, the concerns over the number of parking spaces or that sort of thing. But you could agree on the basic ratio for that.
That's right.
And it seems like, you know, then if it's more about like, overall, was the visual presence of this thing, and which is already a kind of a, a somewhat. Uh questionable area to get into with forty B. I mean, obviously, there must be some limit where you can say this is. So out of character that it creates problems. Um but it's understood that the building is out of character, right? So ideally, you should do the best you can. To to fit a building that's out of character, to bring it somewhat into character. And I think that's what, I think Jim and and Amy are really. Um and, you know, in in all earnestness, trying to do here. Um I guess what I'm, what I'm concerned about is the the difference between asking the board, are we moving in the right direction? And at some point, you need to ask the board, are we close to the destination? Right? Because I think they often are saying, yeah, yeah, right direction, bring it smaller, keep going, right direction, making it smaller, keep going. The question is, well, I mean, where is the destination? Is the destination? Three stories all around, or is the destination understanding? You know, it could be three, it could be four, it could be more, or what? Um I I wish they could give a little clearer guidance to, and I think Jim and Amy, I feel bad for you in the middle here. I wish there could be some clear guidance of, is there a limit in their mind? It can't be more than three stories at the at the edges. It can't be more than four stories anywhere. It, you know, it can't cover more than X percent as a site, whatever it is. You know, and that's what zoning is typically asked to do. It's not unusual. Um that's how zoning's written. In a forty B case. Those rules don't apply, but it's the same kind of question, or are we creating some kind of envelope for this building that we can live with? Or not? Um. I agree that within an envelope, there's a better way and a worse way to make a building, but but I need to hear from them that they can live with something within an envelope. I mean, it's, it's hard for me to worry too much, because, I mean, it's, it's basically up to the applicant. How long do you want to keep going? And do you feel we're making progress? And as long as they feel that, I'm comfortable riding the horse along.
Well, that that's a good point, because, you know, from our perspective, you know, you know, and I mean, it's, you know, we have to have a candid conversation. We're comfortable where we are. You know, I I think this, you know, because you you know, if this ends up getting denied at the zoning board, it's gonna be appealed to the Housing Appeals Committee, the State Board. Lack of a better term, okay. And with what we've done, traffic wise, parking wise, exceeding parking, reduce all these reductions and massing. I feel very comfortable where we are with that. Um, you know, I just feel comfortable, I'm being honest with you. Um I've got some experience with that. I feel pretty good about it. Um and, you know, from the board's perspective, you know, you know, I alluded to this. You know, I I guess, you know, there's risk on both sides, because, you know, we could lose at H A C, you know, that's always possible. I would never say, you know, but I'm very comfortable where we are. And and, you know, you have a lot of experience with this, Ezra. I assume that you know why I'm comfortable, because we've really done a lot here. Gone from fifty-six on the site approval, kind of forty-two units. That's a twenty-five percent drop, more than twenty-five percent drop if we go to forty. Um and, you know, I guess, so our risk is we lose, but the board's risk is, you know. If it's denied and it gets approved by the Housing Appeals Committee, as you know, they don't put any conditions on. You know, they're just gonna approve it. So now there's no discussion on materials, operation, maintenance plan. And if these parking accommodations.
I mean, if I can jump in, I think I think some of the challenge I often see is. These processes, even while they're time limited, you know, with extensions. They they tend to get into this process where people keep wanting to sort of fiddle and kick things down the road. Until they're no longer willing to. And I think they they need to end, you know, they they can end at a process where everyone says, that's it, we all love it. You couldn't make this building better. I I somewhat doubt we're gonna get there. I think we're more gonna be in a place where either the board needs to clearly articulate, this is okay, we can live with this. Or the applicant needs to articulate, this is the most I'm willing to change. And that will then move us into closure, right? And I think that's a, that takes some guts on on one or the other's part. I've seen it come from both sides. You know, I've seen the board say very clearly, sorry, this is our line in the sand. We can't live with anything more than X. And they punt it to the developer to then say, can you handle that? Or where a developer says, look, I've gone around through three iterations, we've removed this piece, that piece, we've taken from fifty-six down to forty-two. We're at the breaking point. This is the final plan we're submitting. Please decide on it. You know, and and those are, they seem aggressive, but in some ways, that's like what you need sometimes to to move into the closure of a process. Um so I think if we could do that, not in an aggressive way, but in a, hey, we need to, we need to make a decision here. Um, you know, fish or cut bait kind of moment. I don't know if we're quite there, but but either the board or the applicant needs to decide when we're at that moment, and either one can. But I can't.
I'm gonna jump in too. Um Ezra, that's a really good point, because that's kind of what's been on my mind is, and I don't know that we'll get an answer to this. My thought is, what is the, what's the developer's bottom line? So along with massing, I think there's also the issue about density. So, you know, we had heard last time we went down to this units, this unit's now we're down to forty-two. Um, you know, what's the bottom line that they're willing to go to, to get these down? Because I think the massing, like I said, the massing and the density are two different issues, and. I have faith in Peter that he's gonna do an outstanding job, whatever he ends up designing. Um he always does. So I don't have an issue with that per se. I think my, my issue is more about density. Dave brought up a good point at our meeting, saying, you know, if we compare this to the forty B in Greenwood. That, and I don't remember the exact numbers, but this is about double the size of the property on half of the land. So it just, it comes down to that, and I think that until we can kind of figure, get in line and figure that out. To see where everybody's at, I don't know that tomorrow night is the best night to bring this back to the board, in my opinion. I just, I think that they're gonna think that not enough has been done yet, and that's just me speaking, so I can't. Speak for them, but I just, given what we heard at the last meeting, I don't know that they're gonna be happy with this at this point.
We have a, you know, a point well taken, Amy, because I I don't think we've really done anything yet. This is all just kind of talking.
Yeah.
And and conceptual. Peter hasn't, hasn't um drawn anything. I mean, I think on the density issue, you know, we struggle with that, you know, and and Ezra, what I struggle with, and maybe you can give give some input on this, because. You know, what I struggle with on the density is, you know, we meet the parking requirement of the zone, we exceed the parking requirement of zoning. And usually, density is driven by, you know, your ability to park. Um a traffic study says no impact whatsoever. Traffic advisory agrees with that. Um, so, you know, so with with all due respect, I mean, you know. I don't know if it's, you know, I'm just, it's an honest conversation. I don't know if it's a defensible position for the board to say reduce your density. I don't know what that would be based on, just. For 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 what reason? When we've already come from fifty-six down to this number. And if I'm wrong, I I'm I'm happy to he- to hear that, uh you know, but again, this is. Candid conversation about this, because, you know, that that's how you, that's how you bring it to a head, is is Ezra just mentioned. You know, and I, what what's the theory? Why we do, if if the massing works, and the parking works, and the traffic works. Why reduce density? I mean, this is all about providing affordable housing. And you reduce density, you lose affordable units. You lose your count going to your forty B a ti- uh uh ten percent. You know, I I, is it just to lose density, to say, hey, we lost density? We've already lost um from fifty-six down to forty-two. Mr. Todd Bell said at the, at the meeting, this isn't gonna go to thirty, you know, that that's not gonna happen. So, you know, what's it matter if it's? Forty-two or thirty-six, what's the difference, as long as the massing works?
They they, you know, you could have a bunch of one bedrooms in here, basically, and reduce the mass. But you could have fifty-one bedrooms in here, and and the mass would be, you know, smaller. Uh so I I don't know, you can connect massing with units, because you've got a mix. You know, you can change.
They have to have the mix though, Jim. So it, I mean, it does kind of.
No, I'm just, but I'm talking in general, basically, alright? I understand, I understand it's gotta be a mix. I'm just saying, I'm not sure you can connect, you know, architecturally, whether you connect the two. You know, in a private development, so to speak, it it the massing could change with how much you stuff in it, basically. But you can have a lot of density, you just.
Yeah.
You just have a smaller mass.
No, I think, I think that the challenge usually, I mean, both the words massing and density are ones I encourage boards to stay away from. Because they they don't really say what they mean. You know, if density is a problem, it's it should be a problem because it creates other kinds of problems.
Exactly.
Parking problem, traffic problem, not enough water to serve everyone, the the fire department can't, you know, service it, whatever it is. Same with with massing. If massing is a problem, is that because there's gonna be stormwater runoff? There's gonna be shadow impacts. Name them and address them. If it's the, if it's too massive and therefore there's gonna be stormwater runoff, we need a stormwater system. If it's gonna be shadow impacts, we might need to change where the massing is to remove the shadows. Um if the, if the density creates a problem, because of parking, make more parking. Um if it creates a problem because of access, you know, make no left turn, or put a stop sign, or a red light, or. Those are, you know, those are kind of concrete problems you can solve, but massing and density are kind of, they're they're more like emotional words. You know, we we, there's something about it we don't like, but we haven't put our finger on what. And the forty B process ideally should be, put your finger on the what, and then fix it.
Well.
What I, that's well said, Ezra, but the what can't be, we just don't like the density. I mean, you know, you're right. I mean, it can't just be, we we just think it's too many units. Well, you know, if if the parking and traffic work. You know, I I just don't, it it, to me, you know, that's where I'm kind of struggling. That, you know, I I, you know, I just, you know, we we don't want to bid against ourselves here. We, you know, we've done, we've made a lot of changes, you know. But, you know, we're happy to work on the massing, you know, by reducing this massing and taking off these floors and all this stuff. It's a pretty big change, and it it results in, you know, less, you know, the units are now where the parking was, and not up high, that, you know, the rentals are less. Um they're, you know, they're gonna probably be smaller units, which my client's fine with. Doing that in an effort to to address the massing, but, you know, I, you know, I'm just, I I think we're gonna. We are gonna really run into a wall if somebody says, oh, we just want you to lose eight units. Why? You know, there's no, there's no legal basis or theory to 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 back that up with what all the studies are showing at this point.
I I might suggest that at tomorrow's meeting is we report back. Whether it be me or you, Brian, of what we've hashed around, alright? Particularly in relationship to the elevations, and what the possibilities are, and. Say it's back in the study mode, basically, and concept mode to get something. But I would also ask, um maybe ask Ezra to speak up. To his first point, which is, what the heck do you guys want? And then get into, you know, the same question you just posed, basically, and massing and unit count and like. And the fact that you gotta address it basically by the the affected points, and not by just using a global term. So I I think what, in my hearing what Ezra said, I think it all needs to be said. Out in the open with the board, let them chew on it, think about it, basically. And um, you know, say, you know, you guys have added confusion to this, but no direction, uh so to speak. Here I am, trying to sort of slice and dice, basically, and Peter's done the same thing. Um I'm not sure what Peter's would look like. I've given you a hint as to what my thing might look like. Um so, and I don't think we should go any further at this moment. Then go back to the board and say, okay, we had this discussion, we think we can do X, Y, and Z, but. We haven't got a concept that we can show you, and maybe we'll have it by the next time we meet. But here's the issue, guys, and let Ezra basically, you know, do his little talk. And and maybe he can elicit from the board members more succinct direction. Because I, I, you know, I think it's, as Ezra said, it's emotional. It's emotional by the neighborhood, it's emotional on part of some of the board members and the like. But at the same time, it needs to be said, it needs to be worked through. So that Peter and I can basically, um you know, look at the ideas, basically, and see if. Help Peter basically come along with something that might be more in the direction that maybe they're thinking. Um, so, I mean, that's, that's my ten cents at the moment.
And, you know, to be clear, you know, and I think you know this, you know, we don't want to draw a line. We want to work this through. Uh as is evidenced by what Peter's talking about. And, you know, we're willing to lose units to do that, you know, because what Pete is talking about, and what Jim, what you're talking about, is gonna be, is gonna result in a loss of. You know, probably at least a couple of units. So. We're happy, you know, we're not happy, but we're willing to do that, to make it work, to try to, try to um to to get to a common ground.
Well, so I'm happy to to say essentially what I said here to the board. You know, there's, there's a point at which it's, you always sort of figure out who's gotta be the bad cop, or who's gotta be, you know, the the dose of reality, and. There are times when that can be a good role I can play, um as a kind of outside expert of sorts. There are times, I think, when that works better coming from a board member, um because I can be seen as just an advocate. For affordable housing, but I'm happy to to play that role if you think it would help, and say that, and then they.
No, I, I look at it more as, um you're a student. And, I mean, you're a teacher and the students are around you, basically, and, you know, from an outside perspective, basically. Just like some of the neighbors would bring, basically, is, I hear you guys, but you're not being definitive enough. For your subcommittee, basically, or the client, to move forward. We understand, but we, you know, clearly, there's more. So I look at more as a. Education, basically, to them on their part. And, you know, we haven't, we really haven't, that I can think of, basically, had someone like yourself. At our meetings when these type of projects come along. Um they end up work, getting worked out, but this is a, this is a difficult project in a difficult area. So. I, I quite frankly, you know, listening to you. Um, I think they need to hear from you. I think you need to educate, or at least ask some pointed questions from an outside source. Basically, and it's not sitting at the table all all the time, and and, you know. Ask the probing questions, let them think about it, because whether they've gone into that depth, other than, you know, the massing's too big, there are too many units. The traffics, this problem or that problem, is, I think there's some, there's a need, basically, to sort of. Put a rope around it and say, hey, guys, here's, here's what's going on, and you guys need to address it. Whether, whatever that might be, and everything I've heard you say, I think ought to be said to the board.
Sure. Okay, well, I said it to two of you already.
You know, it might be helpful if the board hears from you, the process. You know, I don't think a lot of people understand the process with forty B if it does get denied. I I don't think they understand that it doesn't go to court on appeal, it goes to the Massachusetts Housing Appeals Committee. That then in essence becomes the Board of Appeals, right? That then in essence becomes the Board of Appeals, right? And, you know, they, you know, again, you know, I mean, you know, part of the benefit to the board. You know, approving a project with conditions is they get the conditions. Versus, you know, basically just getting an approved project and then. People are driving by with, you know, no, no conditions, no restrictions and, and, and everyone says. Two years from now, hey, how the town let that happen? Well, it wasn't the town that let it happen. It was the housing appeals committee that let it happen because the town denied it. So.
Okay, so, so that's, I mean, I think if tomorrow we could. Start off with just a quick review of, you know, that. The working group did meet. It only met just this week. We have talked about a couple of ideas to further limit. The, you know, the, the massing up in the, in the heights, we're, we're working this through. Uh, you may be sure that, and then I'd be happy to say this part about like needing to know. Where the finish line is here and, and essentially making it clear about the, not just. Speaking of density and massing, but speaking about their concerns and are those concerns addressed? And if not, what are they specifically? And if they are addressed, we need to be able to move on. I think I can, I can say that, so. Um, I do need to run pretty soon.
And I think, you know, uh, Jim, Ezra, do you think it'd be hap- if it'd be a good idea to show this? What Jim did to like say, we're willing to entertain this type of continued effort to shrink the building?
Could be helpful, but I wouldn't wanna make it look like there was too much more work to keep going, cause I think then they would say, well, why don't you work on that and bring it back next week? Or in two weeks or three weeks.
I, I, you know, in one hand, you could show them and say, you know, look, look what's. It's, it's not generated by the, the developer. It's not generated by the architects. It's just. It's a, it's an idea. To generate ideas, basically. So. I'm not sure that we should show as much as talk about. What we've talked about, basically.
But I think the message should be sent that we're willing to reduce a significant portion of the fourth floor, right?
I think so.
I mean, I, I think, I think it's important for the board to know that, that, you know, that. You know, that.
Right.
Well, it, even in my concept, basically, I've reduced the fourth floor by at least. I gotta say. Half.
Well, we're gonna say that we, we've actually gone farther than your subcommittee asked us to go.
I didn't ask anything. I just, I just posed an idea.
I'm, I'm, I'm being sarcastic, uh, you know, just kidding around. But I think, don't you think Amy, it's important to send that message to the board that. You know, we have talked and Jim suggested a reduction and we might even look to do more of that.
Yeah, I think it is important. And I think, cause I don't, I just briefly looked through. I don't, it doesn't look like there's a lot of. Uh, members of the public on, but I think at the meeting tomorrow, there might be more. So I think it'll be important for them to see that as well. It's never. It, and like you said, people have to understand the forty B project itself and understand it's never gonna be what they want it to be. We would all like it to be four units and that's the end of it. But in reality, that's not possible. So by shrinking it down. As much as possible, making it fit more into the neighborhood, I think is gonna be important. And by letting them know. The process and how we're gonna get there, I think is gonna be helpful for everybody.
What are your thoughts, Amy, at this point, looking at this and talking about reducing the fourth floor and?
I mean, I like the idea of taking the fourth floor off. Um. I, I'd like to see what Peter can, um, can come up with. Like I said earlier, I don't have, I never have an issue with his architecture. He always does a wonderful job. Um, but it will be nice to see that with that other floor gone, just to see. What we're looking at. And I don't know if, um, I think Ezra had brought up a, a shadow study, so I don't know if that's something that could be brought up once that. Ooh, sorry, once that portion is done, um. Or I don't know if it would be worth it to do it now if we are gonna take it. Off to, you know, and then have to redo it, but it might be something to look into.
So I'm, I'm happy to make those points at the meeting. I think probably rather than spend a whole lot of time going through the different. You know. You know, Jim's concepts and Peter's ideas. It might be best if Peter just presented saying, we got some really good ideas in working group. We're still processing them, but they basically involve the concept of bringing down the building on either one or both sides. You know, and we understand that would mean sacrificing. You know, a few units. Um, we imagine it would still be, you know, in the, in the, in the low forties. Um, and we, we don't want this process to be about how many units is the magic number. But we're trying to address the concerns about massing and sort of maybe show a couple of those images. And then I'd be happy to jump in and say. You know, I think we're moving forward, but we need to know, are we close to the? You know, to, to something the board can live with. And then I can lean in very quickly to say, look, that is what this is about, is something you can live with. No one is ever saying, this is your ideal zoning for this property. We already know that. That's what the forty B process is about is. Your zoning for this piece of property doesn't work with affordable housing. So therefore. That's why, you know, that this, this is by necessity. Too massive and too dense. Let's put that aside and say, what are the concerns about the massing and the density? And see which of those have been addressed. It seems like the parking and the access have largely been addressed. If that's not true. Why not? And let's be clear. Would that work?
Yep. I think it would.
Yeah, I agree with everything. It sounds great.
That would be helpful.
All right. I don't think we can get any further on this. I think we, I think. Brian, you've got a game plan to move forward with and. And, uh, we'll see you at, uh.
Yeah, I mean, I'll give the introduction and then, uh, you know, just kind of, you know, where we are and our willingness to keep going and, you know, and what we did today and then. Hand it over to Ezra. So. That's fine.
All right. Anything else? All right.
No, thank you. Appreciate it.
Then, uh, I'm gonna close the meeting. Amy and I will close the meeting, basically. On, uh, forty-four, forty-six, eighty Crescent Street. At, um. Five oh ten, basically. Um, we thank you for your efforts and. Let's keep the conversation going. I'm sure it will. Yeah, till our next Zoom meeting by this group.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for everyone's hard work. Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you. See you guys tomorrow.